Call is made in order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Blaine?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll stand for a moment of silence, keep in mind all the troops that are fighting over sea for our freedom, keep them in mind tonight, then we'll go into the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the first call to public comment on issue within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask stat review of matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion. In the back there are sign up sheets for those who wish to talk. I will give anybody else an opportunity afterwards. First, we're going to have Doug Stinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Doug Stinson. I'm here representing Penale County Mounted Posse. Two aspects tonight. I wanted to get, one, give you an update on the rodeo grounds. Last time we talked to you, we let you know that was doing some maintenance and we're doing some upgrades in the water system. That work has begun. And I want to make a public thank you to Jack Moore and Coolidge Pump and Engine, along with the electrician, true value, as well as the town itself, because Public Works is the one that actually formed and poured the concrete slab the water tank's sitting on. So we're getting that gun. Everything's looking good for the Junior Prada. And the other thing I'd like to do, I was hoping our new royalty coordinator would be here, Katie, but she's not here tonight. So if the council would allow, I'd like to introduce the 2016-2017 Junior Prada Queen for this year, Jenny. Go ahead and tell them about yourself a little bit.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. I am very honored to be your 2016-2017 Florence Junior Prada Rodeo Queen, and I'm very excited to see what it has in store for me and everybody else. I am very excited to run in the Prada this year, and I hope to do a very good job and make you guys very proud. Thank you.
Okay, now, one thing you let, whoa, 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 whoa. Now, you've got to get back up there and mic. Do you mind telling us your name?
My name is Jenny Martinez.
And where do you live, Jenny?
I live in Queen Creek.
All right. Well, thank you very much, you're a very pretty young lady, and do us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give her a hand, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to introduce her. The other thing I would like to say about her is she's not only the queen, she's been a participant at the Junior Prada for the last several years, so she rodeos as well. Katie did just walk in, so...
Katie, does Katie got a few things she'd like to say? All right.
Katie's the new royalty coordinator starting this year.
Okay.
I am very excited to be part of this group and this part of the town. I've been a rodeo queen for three years and hoping to run for Miss Rodeo Arizona this next year as well. So I'm looking forward to bring a lot to this rodeo and then also this town. I've been able to Haley George, the queen from last year, I actually got her to participate in the rodeo and then become their queen. So it's been quite fantastic group to be part of the Penale County Mounted Posse and then to be also part of the town of Florence.
Well, great. We're glad to hear that. You're going to run for Miss Rodeo Queen?
Yes, Miss Rodeo Arizona, that's correct.
Okay. And where will that be held at?
That'll be held in Payson in August.
Okay. Well, that's a good time for everybody to go up in August, get out of the heat. Well, congratulations and wish you the best on it and take care of our young queen.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve. Stephen? Where are you at? You're next, bud.
Well, my name is Steve Smallage, folks, and I represent the Happy Adobe. My wife is not here, so I'll speak for her. I'm here on a worrisome part of what's going on on the Circle K. I am a business owner in town. I am also a resident in town. I wish that the council and our body mayors and whatever might be involved in trying to find out on these Circle K's, before you go ahead and grant all these variances they want, try to find out from them if they are going to lease those buildings, in what criteria they're going to fall in, are they going to try and ask $2,000 or $3,000 a month out of these buildings, so they're non-leasable. Try to find out if their intent, before you vote on this measure to grant them these lenances on the properties that you're trying to do, if they intend to make it look like the one in Coolidge, which at the present time is totally boarded up and a fence around it. I understand that the newspaper has said that the Circle K is a four-year lease, and that one that I'm talking about enjoys my property. My concern is that I don't want to see a boarded up Circle K, or fenced-in piece of property, or derelict property beside mine. I try really hard to keep it clean. I try to do the best for the town that I can, and I expect other businesses, including them, to do so. And I think it would be just a shame to pass anything that they want to grant them that property without the town having the ability to lock them down and say, "What are you going to do for this town? Are you going to assure that these buildings, you actually even have the ability to lease them?" Because lots of times you can't sublease. And I understand the one that is beside me, to the north side of me, is a leased building. They do not own it. So can they sublease it out? If they can't sublease it out and they got another four-year lease, it's going to set their bacon. I wish the council and the town would have the spokesman, the representative for the Circle K to address these problems, just simply because I'm not against the Circle K expanding over there. I mean, you know, business is business. I think it'd be good for the town. It'd probably make a greater appearance. But the part that comes down is the money worth them moving to one building and leaving us with two derelict buildings. We have enough issues in this town with buildings that can't seem to get renovated for one reason or another, and I'm one of those. And I just think that we really need to, because once you do this, it's too late. We can't say, "No, you can't put up a fenced-in yard in front of there. No, you can't put plywood up." We're done. So whatever the town does, before you give these variances for them to move the building, to make sure they have enough so they can stay away from the church next door, I think you really need to consider addressing these problems personally in maybe closed sessions with our mayor, with our managers and stuff, and try to find out exactly what their direct intent is. Because you are dealing with a corporation. You're not dealing with an individual, me. I can stand up and tell you and I'm going to promise you I'll do something, and I will do my utmost to do it. But you're dealing with a corporation, and they're going to do whatever they have to do to generate the most amount of money for their pocket. And I just hope that you all will think very harshly before you make this consideration to give these variances and stuff to them, so they can just come in and leave us in a very poor position. And the other thing, probably more than three minutes, but anyway, I would like to have some type of help from the town, because if they get the property next door to me, if they bring in equipment and park it on the road frontage where I am, or they put in fire hydrants on my street, or do, that leaves me with no parking. And I would like to see the town try to talk to them or whatever, if you can, to make sure that any of their construction business stays on the other two streets, the back street, the highway off of the main road out there, or over towards the Ice House, where there's no businesses, where there's no residential on that side. I don't really think my neighbor's going to appreciate all the banging and beating either, but it's going to get done. But what we don't want is dump trucks and cement mixers and stuff parking on the parking area, because I am limited. I am truly limited. They park two trucks over there, my business is done for the day. I mean, I just had to ask some of the guys over there the other day when they was doing some work over there out front putting in asphalt, "Please park down the other end, because I'm open, I'm there for business, I need to generate business," you know, and thankfully, they moved on. But I would hope that the town would try to keep that in consideration, too. And I appreciate it very much for the council hearing me. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other member of the audience have anything they'd like to say? Seeing no movement, we'll close call to the public.
Proclamation. National HOSA Week. Whereas HOSA, Future Health Professionals, is a career and technical student-oriented organization for high school and post-secondary students who plan to pursue a health career, and whereas HOSA serves as a pipeline of future health professionals, and whereas HOSA provides a strong foundation for preparing tomorrow's healthcare professionals through skill development, leadership opportunities, and community service, and whereas health science education and HOSA support and encourage students whose interests lie in pursuing a health career, thereby helping to alleviate national shortage of health workers, and whereas HOSA promotes the development of responsible citizenship, personal integrity, and compassion in humanity. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Tom J. Rankin, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, proclaimed November 6th through the 12th, 2016, as National HOSA Week.
All right, Brent, thank you very much. Tonight, we have with us Jamie Greer. I got your name right, right?
Yeah.
And you're a member of CAVIT in Coolidge. Now, where do you go to school at?
My home school?
Yeah.
I go to Postenbutte.
Postenbutte. Lot of kids from, in the CAVIT are from Florence and Postenbutte, as well as Coolidge. The opportunity you're getting out there exceeds a lot of kids, what they get in just regular, normal high school. You're beginning the career field, you've chosen a career field to go to, and we just hope that you continue on with it. And on behalf of my town council and myself, it's proud to proclaim this week for you guys. And we just want you to succeed. We want you to be good. And we want you to come back one of these days, and we have another hospital here in Knoll Town, that you might go to work there. Okay? And you've got something you want to say, I know that.
Mm-hmm.
And here you go.
Thank you.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor Rankin and all the city council members. My name is Jamie Greer, and I'm a second-year student at CAVIT, and I'm in the medical assisting program. I'm also a full-time student at Postenbutte. CAVIT has eight different career and technical education programs, and we serve students from all over Penale County. All of our programs offer free dual enrollment college credits, licensure opportunities, or both. Students attend CAVIT for two years and we're bussed back and forth to our home schools. Sorry, I talk fast. We're very proud that we're involved in many, many real-life activities, such as we run clinics, and we also participate in business and industry for job shadowing and internships. Tonight, we're here to discuss HOSA, which is our first professional organization, and it's specifically for allied health students. I'm a chapter officer for HOSA, so I had training this past summer, and we also have created a program of work, which is also called a strategic strategy, or a strategic plan, and I help, and I have to assist in running monthly meetings, just like you all do here. Besides learning these leadership skills, our members can also compete in competitions as in, we have a spring conference in Tucson, and they also have the potential at competing at our national level, which is held in Orlando, Florida this year. It is National HOSA Week, November 6th through 12th of 2016, and we are asking for, we're asking of all of our participating cities to make a proclamation for it, which you have, and thank you so much for allowing us to address you this evening.
Jamie, thank you very much, and I know, speaking in public, I still have trouble. I get embarrassed. Yeah. But you will be okay. You're doing great. And just keep it up. Like I said, continue with your career, and we're mighty, mighty proud of you, and I'm proud to be able to name this week for you all. So take the proclamation with you, take your notes here that you're reading from, and tell your teacher over there that I'm not a bad guy.
I promise he's not a bad guy, Ms. Martinez.
Thanks, Michelle. Jamie, again, on behalf of the town council and myself, thank you very much, and God speed and good luck to you, honey.
Thank you.
Okay, let's give her a hand, ladies and gentlemen.
Next, we have a presentation by Ken Hall, the Executive Director of CAG.
I'm just waiting on the mayor. I heard him back there. Here he comes.
Good evening, Mayor Rankin and members of the town council. My name is Ken Hall, and I am the Executive Director of the Central Arizona Governments. And I basically wanted to come before you this evening to give you maybe a five, a seven-minute overview of CAG, or the Central Arizona Governments. I prepared a slide presentation and also provided handouts prior to the meeting, so you should have a copy of the presentation, and also a map and some cards. Basically, CAG, or the Central Arizona Governments, is a council of governments, and we were signed into existence in 1970 by then-Governor Jack Williams under Executive Order 70-2. Basically, what Executive Order 70-2 did is divide the state of Arizona into six distinctive regional councils of governments. I have, I prepared a map here. I think you can kind of see it, but you also have a copy of it up there as well. There are two, of the six councils of governments, there are two urban councils of governments, one being the Maricopa Association of Governments located in Phoenix, which serves metropolitan Phoenix and Maricopa County, of which the Town of Florence is also a member. And then there's also the Pima Association of Governments in Tucson, which provides service to the Pima County area. And then there are four rural COGS, the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, which is NA-COG, which is comprised of Yavapai, Coconino, Navajo, and Apache Counties. Then there's the Western Arizona Council of Governments, or WA-COG, which is comprised of La Paz, Mojave, and Yuma Counties. And then there's the Southeastern Arizona Governments Organization, to the southeast of us, which is comprised of Santa Cruz, Cochise, Graham, and Greenland Counties. And then there's us, the Central Arizona Governments, which is comprised of Gila and Penale Counties, of which the Town of Florence is also a member. There are 23 membered governments that belong to our organization, our agency, the Central Arizona Governments. And basically, this consists, our membered governments consist of 11 municipalities of Penale County, which are essentially Apache Junction, Casa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy, Florence, Kearney Mammoth, Morana, Maricopa, Queen Creek, and Superior, and also six municipalities in Gila County, as well as both Gila and Penale County Governments. And we also consist of four Native American communities, the Ak'Chin, Gila River, White Mountain Apache, and San Carlos Apache Tribes. From a regional governance perspective, in terms of how we are set up, we have three technical advisory committees, which are the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, the Environmental Planning Committee, and the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, or the CES. The recommendations from these particular committees are forwarded to our management committee, the CAG Management Committee, which is comprised of city and town managers, town clerks, tribal managers, other appointees. Basically, the management committee functions as the advisory committee to the regional council. And all the recommendations from the management committee, along with any regional governance issues, and any internal issues to our agency, CAG as a whole, are then forwarded to our CAG Regional Council. Now, our CAG Regional Council is our governing body, which consists of mayors, county supervisors, tribal governors, other appointees, and they set our policies, they make decisions, and they govern CAG as a whole. Typically, our agency committees, our technical advisory committees, meet on a monthly, bimonthly, and quarterly basis, and in accordance with our bylaws, the CAG Management Committee and the CAG Regional Council meet a total of six times a year. The next slide identifies the representatives from the Town of Florence to our agency, the CAG. Mayor Tom Rankin currently serves on the CAG Regional Council. Mr. Jesse Kudusen, who's over here, Assistant Town Manager, serves upon our CAG Management Committee. Mr. Christopher Arsalas is the Public Works Director, and he serves on our Environmental Planning Committee. And Ms. Jennifer Evans, a Town Management Analyst, also serves on the CAG Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee. In terms of our departments, through ADOT, we carry out a number of transportation planning activities. We administer community development block grants. We receive an annual non-entitlement amount from the Arizona Department of Housing of about $2.2 million, and we distribute that money throughout our region. Through the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, we carry out regional environmental planning and 208 water quality planning activities. We also carry out a number of economic development planning functions. We have a pretty sophisticated information services department, and that provides socioeconomic data and maintains a variety of regional databases and provides GIS mapping, our geographic information systems mapping, to our communities that are in need of mapping services. We created a community development planning department for communities in need of our planning services. And under contract to Penale County, we also implement the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which is known as WIOA. But this has been rebranded as Arizona at Work. If you're out and about and you see Penale County, Arizona at work, we administer the Adult and Dislocated Worker Programs associated with that, with the WIOA. In addition to these functions, these departmental functions, we are also a federal economic development district under the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. That means that we're eligible to go after economic development grants and assistance for public works and planning projects. Also, by statute, we are the Office of the Penale Regional Transportation Authority. The RTA was placed together for the purpose of creating over $600 million in roadway and transit improvements in Penale County over the next 20 years. And I would just like to let the council know that Mr. Mayor Rankin currently serves as the chairperson to the Penale RTA, and we've certainly appreciated his leadership throughout this process. Another, this next slide, there, I have a picture of two different documents, and you should have received both of these documents already. One is entitled, "Central Arizona Governments: Regional Overview Fiscal Year 2017." This is basically an overview of CAG as an agency. If you go through it, it provides a little bit of our history, an overview of our agency and the region, the function of CAG, and in the middle, there's a listing of each one of our members. And we also go through information on the CAG departments and functions in each department. We have a staff directory and a section on regional governance. It's a, it's a good overview of the Central Arizona Governments as an agency. And while I'm going out to the cities and towns, another document that we put together, it's a smaller brochure, it's called, "Scope of Services." And basically, this identifies certain activities that we can provide assistance to our cities and towns with. And if you look at the inside of the document, they're broken into grant-writing assistance, assistance with surveys, an array of different community development activities, transportation planning, economic development, GIS mapping, our geographic information systems, and information assistance, meeting facilitation, and a number of other items that are listed below that. But these are the two handouts I had for the council. In summary, I just wanted to state that not only are we a regional governmental alliance, but we're also here to assist our cities and towns. We are your council of governments. And if there is any way possible that we can assist the town with anything, you know, feel free to give us a call. I've left my card. Call me at any time if you need us to come out for anything. Give us a call, and we'll always respond, and we'll help out in any way possible that we can. So I would like to stress that please contact us if you need us for anything. I have some, the next slide is a contact, if you need contact information, and our webpage, our website, rather, is www.cagaz.org. And with that, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Any member of the council have any questions for Ken? John?
I have a loaded question. I see he has ADEQ.
Yes.
On your things that you have contact with.
That is correct.
We are having a problem with ADEQ with our water supply, and we can't get their attention to protect our water, our drinking water. How do we, how do we get help on that?
If you call us, we will get in touch with them, and we will do everything we can to set up a meeting.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
John, just for your information, two or three years ago, CAG passed a resolution in support of Florence and our endeavors on that, on that issue.
I think we need to remind them.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
On their November 9th meeting, I don't know if this would be an opportunity to bring it up, they also have the status of the 2016 CAG Section 208 Water Quality Management Plan. If he attended one of those meetings, could he also bring that up at that time?
Certainly could.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Any other question? Well, Ken, thank you much. Well, Ken, thank you much. Been on to you about coming down here and letting the council know exactly what CAG does. If you have a lot of questions about CAG and you can't get ahold of Ken, you can always get with Brent, or, yes, some of you may not know him, but Brent worked for, at that time, CAG, C-A-A, was...
C-A-A-G?
Yeah, two As, for numerous years. So he's a wealth of information on CAG and an asset to our community by having him there with, associating with CAG. Ken, thank you very much again, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item C, Presentation and Acceptance of the 2016 Award from the Arizona Chapter of the American Planning Association, in the category of Best Distinguished Historic Plan, Program, or Landmark for the Reese Home Rehabilitation Project.
Mayor and council, this particular item, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our senior planner, Gilbert Elgin, and there's a few more people in the audience I know that will want to come up and share in this moment, so I'm going to go ahead and just let Gilbert take over. Thank you.
Mayor Rice, mayor, council, good evening. Before we get started, I wanted to bring up a few people to present this to the council. Skip, if you want to stand up and be recognized? Skip Chase?
So, before we start, I would like to introduce a town resident, her name is Teresa Reese, also known by Teddy. She's the owner of this property here in front of you. It is called the Jenny Lopez Residence. It's a property that was transformed, and it's the one that won the award for the town. I want to make it very clear that the former town grants coordinator, Ernie Felice, was the one that started this project, and he allowed the rest of us to kind of tag along. Thank you for that, Ernie. This property that we have here in front of you in the image, it was built in 1914. On March 25th, 2015, the Historic District Advisor Commission had approved a design review application to rehab this property completely, but due to the high cost of rehabbing this property, the project almost never went forward. It was too expensive. However, those of us who were involved, we came up with a solution to this issue. It's there in front of you. We had, we were able to come up with the idea of taking the historic property, which is on this side here, and extending it, giving it an extension. This here is a three-bedroom, two-bath home that was added on to the property to make it one-piece. As you see in front of you, it was given small features that make it blend into the existing historic property. So the three items that were approved, actually, I should say that were accomplished, was that we removed a bided home from the area with this property here in front of you. We preserved this property for further rehabbing in the future, and we also improved the living conditions for a town citizen. Now, I'm going to give the chance for the other guys that were involved to speak if they'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Elgin. You may have heard before I came to work for the Town of Florence that I was involved in a little rehabilitation project on Pinal Street, and I just want you to know that the pride I had for being involved in this project, for being so fortunate and very lucky to have been a part of this project, the Reese House, exceeds what happened at Pinal County. And there were so many people involved, this was a perfect project. You had an elderly widow who had raised her family here in a historic home in downtown Florence and was living on social security and didn't have the means to improve her house, and was living basically without any heat or electricity, plumbing failing, and you had the Bruce's, who have done rehabilitation for so many years, that were fortunately available to help with the project. Arizona Department of Housing provided the grant funding, the Historic District stepped forward and said, "Let's do this." Planning and development with Mark and Gilbert, there were so many people that were a part of this, and I was so very lucky and fortunate to be involved in the project. I'm a Florence guy, how lucky can I be to have been involved in two important projects like this that were recognized statewide? So thank you very much for letting me be a part of this.
I just want to say thank you to the town council for allowing Rosa and I to be involved. We've been deeply committed to housing rehab in Pinal County for thirty-plus years, and it was a pleasure to work on a project like this. I just want to encourage you to keep looking for funding to do more housing here, because there's a lot more that we can do. It helps houses, it helps families, it helps neighborhoods, and it pays my insurance bill, so.
I also wanted to mention that we have in the audience behind us, we have Skip Chase, he's the owner of the Taco Bell here in Florence, and he was gracious enough to donate money to have the historic portion of the property painted, this portion here, so it would match. Not only did he have it painted, but it also replaced fascia, did some minor repair to the property, made it weatherproof, so. He's here, did you want to say something?
Come on.
I was happy to give you a little check. It was a great project, he got me involved in it, Gilbert got me in there when I was down at the Town Hall the one day working on it, and I'm just happy it worked out as well as it did. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
So thank you all. Like I said, it was a group effort, appreciate having the chance to work on this. This is the actual home itself, the portion, the brand-new portion that was built, and here's the article from the paper. So now I would like to present this award to the town.
Now I see where you put it all down. See, on behalf of the town council, myself... It's an honor to accept this project, the award that you put into it, for the town to get it. I've known Teddy a long time, she knew me all my life. A neat lady, a deserving lady, that couldn't do it, and it couldn't have got done if it wasn't for the cooperation of everybody involved in the Historical Society. And I hate to say anything good about Alton, but I have to. He was associated with Coolidge too long. When your company came in and you painted the building to make it match, it really did a good lot for that area, really, really did. We want to thank you very much, thank the Taco Bell, or, I know you're not Taco Bell, but you own it, and we appreciate that, and you're coming into our community and helping like that, maybe more people will get involved in future projects that we have. And Ernie, what can I say about you? I'm thinking, but it's all, but, seriously, you put your heart and soul into projects when you get them started, and you'd like to see them finished, and I've seen that with the courthouse, the job you did over there working with them. I've seen it with this project here. Even though you've left this and went over kind of west of here to Casa Grande, I know your roots are still here in Florence, and they always will be, because you've got too many relatives that won't let you forget it. But again, on behalf of the town council, myself, all the citizens of Florence, thank you very much for everything that you guys have done, I really appreciate, and this award just approves that when we all work together, things work right, and I appreciate it very, very much, and the whole council does, too. Okay? Thank you. Wait a minute, Mark wants a picture.
Yeah, if a couple of tall people can stand, yeah, there, okay.
Leave it up there, that's a cool place for it.
Item D, presentation by Ashley Shawarsky, Utility Service Partners Incorporated regarding service line warranties. Ashley and I have worked together previously. She is talking to you about a program that's sponsored by the National League of Cities that a number of communities utilize in Arizona, and we thought, I ran into her at the league conference, and we thought it would be a good idea to present what they do to the council for your consideration.
Perfect. Well, I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. As Brent said, my name is Ashley Shawarsky, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Our service line program is the only one that is endorsed by the National League of Cities, as well as here in Arizona by the League of Arizona Cities and Towns as well. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners, and we administer the program, and we are a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau, so that is something that we are very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. But what our program really helps to do is address the public policy issue of our aging infrastructure. We know that communities all across the United States really are doing their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowners' portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's actually why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the United States, so they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide that program. So what we do is we partner with communities in order to make our completely voluntary program available to your residents, and we provide homeowners with optional protection on their external water lines, external sewer lines, as well as in-home plumbing, and we provide our services with a complete turnkey approach for the town, where we handle all of the aspects of the program, the marketing, billing, claims management, and customer service, and there is absolutely no cost for the town if you choose to participate in the program, and the town would actually receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I find to be the biggest benefit of our program is that it really just helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every town that I speak with, I'll hear the same type of thing, that if a resident does have some sort of issue with one of their external lines, their first call is typically to someone at the town, and then you all go out only to find that it's on the resident's portion of that line, and then the homeowner is left to find a reputable contractor and foot this large bill that they either thought may be covered by their homeowner's insurance or by the town, which we obviously know that neither of that is the case. So I kind of think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of the residents within the community would receive a letter in the mail, and the beginning of the letter really is just educational. It lets homeowners know that this is something that they are responsible for, and lets them know that the town has partnered with us in order to introduce this voluntary program. So even if someone chooses not to enroll in our program, at least they are well aware that this is something that they are responsible for, and that the town tried to take a proactive approach at educating them of this. Also, it really can give your residents peace of mind, because they know for just a few dollars a month, they can choose to transfer the risk of these lines on to us, a reputable company that is not only endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and if they were to have an issue, all they have to do is make one phone call to us, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we would actually dispatch a local licensed plumber or contractor to do the repair. So that's another huge benefit of our program, is that we only use local area contractors for all of our work, and we do that for many reasons, but mainly, we want to keep as much money here within your local economy as possible, as well as your local contractors would be familiar with the town's local code, and make sure to do the work up to your standards, which includes getting all of the proper permits for the work as well. And once we partner with the community, what we actually begin to do is develop a contractor network that would service the claims for the Town of Florence, and we really let you be as much or little involved in that selection as you would like. Some of our current partners have provided us a list of contractors that they want us to reach out to, others want to stay out of it as much as possible. Either works for us, but with all of our contractors, we go through a detailed vetting process, where we make sure that they are licensed, have the proper amount of insurance, don't have open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, as well as we conduct background checks and drug screenings. We just really want to make sure that it's someone that your homeowners are comfortable with coming to their home, as well as potentially inside of their home. As for our coverage, we offer three completely separate programs. We offer the external water line coverage, external sewer line coverage, as well as the in-home plumbing. The two external products are set up very similarly, where we begin to cover those lines wherever they become the resident's responsibility, all the way to where they would daylight inside of the home. So if a resident were to have an issue, whether it was a broken, cracked, leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that just needs cleared out, anything that would impede the flow of those lines, they give us a call, we send out one of those local area contractors, and what the homeowner receives for their coverage is up to $4,000 towards each and every repair incident. So this is one of the many things that greatly separate us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per-incident basis, so we do not have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we do not limit the number of incidents or claims that someone can have in a calendar year. So again, the homeowner does receive up to that $4,000 towards each repair incident, but if the repair was also needed in the public street, they receive up to an additional $4,000 towards public street repair, and up to an additional $500 for public sidewalk repair. And again, that's always on a per-incident basis, and we also do not have any type of annual, I mean, deductible or service fee. We did not want, you know, a $50 or $100 service fee to deter someone from actually giving us a call and getting their issue taken care of. As for our third program, it's the in-home plumbing, and this was actually kind of developed by request of our current municipal partners, it kind of was the missing piece of the puzzle, and this would cover any water, sewer, or drain lines that are actually in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. It also includes any lines that could be embedded under a slab or a basement floor, and the repair of clogged toilets. And that's very similar, where there's no service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, no limit on number of claims, and for the in-home, the resident receives up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do notice, when a homeowner chooses to enroll in our program, they typically are a little bit more proactive about getting their issue taken care of, because they know the cost of that repair isn't coming out of their own pocket. As for another feature of our program is the revenue stream for the town. What the town actually receives in return for their partnership with us is 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract, so essentially, if a homeowner chose to enroll in all three products, the water, sewer, and in-home plumbing, then the town could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to in the form of a royalty every January. Obviously, our current partners can do anything that they would like with that revenue stream, but most commonly, they have set up funds to help low-income residents that may be having trouble paying a utility bill from month to month, or to go to some type of social services program. I know the big thing everyone always wants to know is how we market our program, so we only ever market by direct mail, so you never have to worry about us calling, door-to-door, anything like that. We typically have three mail campaigns per year, and the reason why we do have three mail campaigns is because we offer three products. Each mail campaign is geared towards one specific product at a time, and the reason why we do that is to limit any type of confusion. We want homeowners to be well aware that these are separate products, they do not have to choose any of them or any combination of them, so each letter is geared towards one product at a time, but that does not deter a homeowner from giving us a call or going to our website and choosing whichever product that they would like at any time. Also, we would never send anything out to your residents unless we had your review and approval prior. So before each and every campaign, we send a copy of our marketing letter over to you for that review and approval, and if we did not receive the approval, we would never mail to your residents for that campaign. We really want you to have input on that message, as well as know exactly what is going out to your residents. Our standard letter, it is very, the beginning is educational, and then it goes... Our standard letter, it is very, the beginning is educational, and then it goes on to let your residents know that the town has partnered with us in order to introduce this voluntary program. But it clearly states that we are a separate company providing this service, as well as it is completely voluntary for the homeowner. And if they want to enroll, all they have to do is return the bottom of the form directly to us, give us a call, or go to our website to enroll. And then really, once we partner with the community, we try to be as transparent as possible, where all of our municipal partners get access to an online partner portal, and will give all of you here access to a lot of good, real-time information. So at any time, you can log on there and see the number of residents enrolled, the number of residents enrolled in each product, as well as the number of claims filed. But what I find most important is it gives you access to our customer satisfaction surveys. So every resident within the town of Florence that would file a claim would receive a customer satisfaction survey, and every one that is returned, good, bad, or indifferent, is uploaded onto that portal. That way, you can take a look at that at any time. And it really allows us to keep track of not only our internal customer service, but also of our local contractors, since they are the face of our company and actually out there doing the work. We just really want to make sure that they're doing the work up to our standards, as well as yours. And if there's any type of issue, we can work together to rectify that as quickly as possible. And to date, we are partnered with over 350 municipalities all across the United States. We have 16 different partners here in the state of Arizona, and they're all listed in that packet there for you, so I don't have to rattle them off to you. And we actually have paid out over $2.5 million in claims just for Arizona residents over the last few years. I know I've rambled on to you all for the last few minutes, so I'm sure you may have some specific questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions for? Thank you, pretty well. Go ahead, Bill.
One, I noticed reading through the information, it mentioned, and you mentioned it too, you said if there's a leak under the slabs, you know, a lot of these historic homes have wooden floors with crawl spaces, you still do those too, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
We have a lot of that common in the Northeast as well, so.
Okay. But I just, just, because I didn't see anything about, you know, wooden floors, okay.
Actually, where are you located? Where is your office located at here in Arizona?
So our offices aren't in Arizona. Our headquarters is actually in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, right outside of there, that's where I live. But we work, my area is actually Arizona, so I work closely with Ken from the league, as well as a lot of the Arizona partners as well, so.
Are you getting good response here in Arizona from your program, or?
Our national average is about, after about two to three years, is a 20% to 25% response rate. I know we are very popular in the city of Phoenix, and just in Phoenix, we paid out over $1 million in claims just for Phoenix residents. So I know they've definitely been utilizing the program there.
You're not going to be like that Affordable Care Insurance, if people get signed up to it, it's not going to double or triple in prices, are you?
No. It's guaranteed that it won't change, at least for one year, and also, it will never go up more than 50 cents in a year, so.
And is it affordable for people that could be considered low-income housing projects?
Our pricing is, it's $5.75 a month for the water line coverage, $7.75 a month for the sewer line coverage, and $6.99 a month for the in-home plumbing. If someone signs up and pays annually, it knocks, it's about $5 per product discount if you pay upfront annually, but that never locks a homeowner into a year agreement. If they need a cancel at any time, they give us a call, go to our website, and we refund any premium they didn't use. So it's always month to month for the resident.
And my wife's looking at me right now.
[laughing]
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions in the council? Well, let me ask you this question: what do we have to do to get the town in support of this?
If mayor and council want to come back further with respect to a contract, please let Lisa or I know, and we'd be willing to get that on a future agenda.
I think we should direct Brent to take a look at this, folks, if it's something that'll help the people out.
Definitely sounds great to me, and with their record, I don't see any problem with it at all.
No, I don't either. You're right, Bill.
We'll get that on a future agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And when you go back to Pittsburgh or back there, put those warm clothes on.
I know.
And think about us out here.
It actually has been pretty nice, so I can't complain, but I'll probably go home and it'll be nice and cold.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item E: Update on the GAIN event. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. For those of you who do not know what GAIN is, GAIN is getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods. This, in other states, is the Neighborhood Night Out program. Arizona chose not to have the program in July, for obvious reasons, so they changed the name, and we do it in October now. But I'd like to thank all those people who attended the GAIN at the Anthem Parkside on Saturday, October 22nd. And this was the first-time event, and it was well-attended, not as much as we'd like to have had, but including the softball attendees who were there. We had probably over 100 people that came through that night. I'd like to thank all the supporters who participated in the event. They were the Pinnell County Sheriff Department, the Pinnell County Rescue Team, the Pinnell County Probation Department, the Coolidge Police Department was there, the Arizona Department of Public Safety, the U.S. Border Patrol, and bikers against child abuse. There were several town departments participating: Parks and Recs, Clint Austin, Meili Harmon, John Dixon, Koko's FTC Entertainment was the highlight of the night. The kids danced and sang and had a good time. Koko really put on a good show for us. The Florence Fire Department Ladder Number 42 with Captain Cory Pine, Engineer Craig Felice, and firefighter Adam Radney were there with the ladder truck. Also want to thank Public Works for providing the barbecue grill. I don't know who specifically did that, so I didn't get a name for that, Chris. And of course, we want to thank the sponsors, the Florence Police Department. Sergeant Scott Morris was the prime organizer. Officer Jeff Palmer was his helper and also an organizer. Kevin Mount was there to assist. Deanna Husk was also there, she served food. And Mary Battle was a volunteer, and she sort of kept us all in line, as she normally does. But these people, you know, from the police department, they did the setup, the teardown, they cooked, they served food, they did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and we just want to thank them for all the stuff that they did. It was a good showing of our police department. It showed they are warm, friendly people, they're good ambassadors for our town. Also, need to thank our chief cook with Mayor Rankin, and Police Chief Dan Hughes and I were sort of the assistants there. But also want to thank Polte and the AAM Management Group for allowing us to have the event on the property. This was, I said this was the first time, it was quite a learning. We've been taking notes, so we expect next year we'll get better at this, and we'll have more people involved. And just want to remind all the downtown people that they're invited to come uptown to these events also. Mr. Mayor, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think that next year, when this is done, we need to advertise it a little bit more, get it out as much as we can on the Anthem portals and things like that. There was a lot of interesting things that went on out there, and night vision, that people don't know what they are, procedures by the Border Patrol on what they're doing out there in the desert, search and rescue units from Pinnell County that were there. And just to be able to talk to the police officers and firefighters and get to know them on a personal basis, again, bringing our community closer together. And I, John, I don't know if I was a chief cook or not, but I know I, you know, we, of course, the reason I was thrown into it, somebody was late.
Yes, we won't mention who that was.
No, but the next time the chief's late at some, oh, we're not going to mention a name. But we did have a good time.
Certainly did.
A lot of people had good comments about it, but I think if we can have more people with that, it'll be just that much better. I know one agency didn't show up that was supposed to be there, but there must have been a conflict scheduling date. But all the agencies were there, they put in the time to come, and they're, you know, so I was glad to see, you know, the Department of Public Safety, the Border Patrol, and search and rescue, of course, were my kind of favorites. And just seeing some of the equipment, you know, back in the days, back in the '70s, when I was with the sheriff's office in search and rescue, if you had a horse, you went. If they're up in the Superstition Mountains, you rode a horse into there and stuff like that. Now these guys have got this climbing gear and all of this stuff. I couldn't believe how those trucks are loaded down with survival gear and search and rescue equipment. It's really interesting. So next year, people need to come out and take a look at it. But John, you're right, it was a great event.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank all the departments here in town, because, you know, even though I called out names here tonight, we had participation from a lot of people working in the background, and we don't recognize our town staff enough, because they were all supporting us in this, you know, finance, paid bills, and, you know, we have people in the background who just answer phones and support us all the time that we don't recognize. I just want to thank all the town staff and all the town employees for their participation.
Well, those guys from Public Works that unloaded that grill and loaded it back up, that'd be some pretty stout people unless you used a forklift or something with that grill, it's a heavy duty. But Chris, make sure all your people know about our work, that we're involved in that, we really appreciate that. Anything else, John?
No, thank you.
Okay, see you everybody there next year.
Item seven: Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects to, at the time the agenda item is called. Item A: Recommendation of Approval. Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control on the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge 2350, special event liquor license application for their Anthem's Motown Performance Event to be held at Anthem Merrill Ranch Union Center on November 18th, 2016. Item B: Recommendation of Approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control for the Pinnell County Historical Society Event Liquor License Application for Their Christmas Party to be held at the Pinnell County Historical Museum December 7th, 2016. Item C: Recommendation of Approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on American Legion Number Nine Application for a Temporary Extension of Premises Patio Permit for the New Year's Eve Block Party for December 31st, 2016, and January 1st, 2017. Item D: Recommendation of Approval of the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on Cocopelli Moon Saloon's Appreciation, Application, sorry, for a Temporary Extension of Premises Patio Permit for the New Year's Eve Block Party for December 31st, 2016, and January 1st, 2017. Item E: Recommendation of Approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control on the Pinnell County Historical Society's Special Event Liquor License Application for their Tom Mix Book Signing Event to be held at the Pinnell County Historical Museum on January 27th, 2017. Acceptance of Public Improvements for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Spirit Loop 2. Item G: Approval of the Pinnell County Property Use Agreement for the Use of a Vacant Lot Located at 383 North Main Street for Holiday Decorations and Special Events. Item H: Approval of the Electrical District Number Two Dusk to Dawn Lighting Contract for Insulation of 11 LED Streetlights Along a Section of Diversion Dam Road in the Amount Not to Exceed $16,329.12, and for Streetlight Energy and Streetlight Maintenance for the Streetlights at a Cost of $271.08 per month. Item I: Approval of a Grant-in-Aid Agreement between the Tohono O'O'odham Nation and the Town of Florence on behalf of the Pinnell County Historical Society for Tribal Gaming Funds in the Amount of $700. Item J: Approval of the Resignation of Deborah Hansen from the Arts and Culture Commission. Item K: Approval of Accepting a Register of Demands Ending September 30th, 2016 in the Amount of $1,855,261.06.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
I'd like to have item F taken off.
Is in Frank?
F in Frank, yes, sir.
Any others? Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? See, no movement, we need a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as read, with the exception of item F.
We have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item 7F. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. John?
Yes, Chris, when I was looking at the documentation on the approval of the acceptance of this Spirit Loop 2, with all the things going on with FEMA right now, I was just concerned, do we need FEMA approval, or how do we make sure that these new areas are under flood control or not under flood control?
This is an individual infrastructure improvement project, as far as the partial acceptance of Spirit Loop, it's, again, a partial acceptance of that, and there's no FEMA ties with this.
Okay, but do we get FEMA approval, or does FEMA look at these, or what? How do, you know, how do we make sure that we don't get caught again with, you know, a area being in a flood control?
Complicated question, I want to kind of keep on topic. Under Arizona state law, a transportation improvement does not necessarily have to go through a FEMA review. Typically, we do make sure that, again, there's no adverse change in water surface elevation when a road is being constructed. This particular improvement is, again, not tied to that LoMar.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we approve item F.
A second.
We have a motion, second, to approve item 7F. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item eight: New Business. Resolution Number 1603-16, Discussion Approval/Disapproval of a Resolution in the Town of Florence. Pinnell County, Arizona, Approving a Town Core Infill Incentive Plan Request Related to the Proposed Development of a New Downtown Circle K Convenience Store and Gas Station to be Located on Pinnell County Assessor Parcel 202-03-0580, also known as CASE-PZ16-56INF. Mark.
Mayor, members of the council, actually, Mr. Smallage was referring to this particular case here tonight, so I apologize to him for the placement on the agenda, but we had lots of other business to conduct. And also, I know in the audience, we have representatives from Circle K that are here and prepared to address specific questions related to what Mr. Smallage brought up. But what we have here specifically is an infill incentive request related to the development of this site. And this is a property that we're all familiar with, because at one point, it served as the Foxworth Lumber Truss Yard, and then it was along Main Street. And, you know, along came the recession, and the company really, really struggled, and that business closed down. For a while, we had a feed store that was operating out of that building for a little while, and then they too closed down. And now that building, the old Foxworth building, has been sitting there, is kind of an eyesore for quite some time. It is, there's several buildings on the property, it's essentially paved, the entire, the entire surface is paved, and there's a chain link fence, in some cases with barbed wire fencing around that property. So, an existing sign on the site that's about 14, 15 foot tall. So it certainly isn't the most welcoming image that we have on Main Street, so of course, we appreciate the concerns of potentially there being a couple of additional small vacated stores on Main Street. But what Circle K would like to do is, they have an interest in building a new store on this property, which you first became aware of when we, when the liquor license was presented to you, mayor and council. And one of the reasons that they actually had to configure the building on the site this way... this way at the site of Main and Brady is because of the separation that they needed to maintain from the store to the church to the, to the south. So, that is why it does have that orientation that is perpendicular to Main Street. That was initially a concern to us, and we worked over a period of the last few months with Circle K extensively on addressing concerns related to how the site would work, how the site plan would work, the landscape being, the building elevations and so forth. Our other concern was that although the building's not in the historic district, it is on the edge of the district, and we wanted to make sure that it was of compatible architecture to fit into the, into the area. This shows you that there's three existing buildings on the, on the site. This, the main access is going to be from, from Main Street. It will flow, flow all the way through though for ease of circulation, and you can see the perpendicular orientation of the, of the building there. Mr. Smallage's property would be on the other side of the, of the building on the Brady side. So, he was referring to when the building is under construction or when it's operational, will there be employees of the contracting firms or ultimately employees of the store that are parking on Brady Street? As you know, at that Happy Adobe location, there is not any onsite parking. And so, the Brady Street is utilized for that business and for some other uses in that, in that area. As far as the building elevations, this project did go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they received unanimous approval of the design review application. They're, they were pleased with the overall layout of the site, as I mentioned, the site plan and the building elevation. So, we actually went through about three or four building elevations on this project. And at the beginning of this effort, we saw a Circle K that was constructed down on Seventh Street in Phoenix in a historic district as well, and it had the brick elevation on it. And so, we, our response was to go to Circle K and say if we could get a building that also had these kinds of features on it with the canopies and the, and the, and the brick veneer, and we were able to work that out too then. So, it is, it is quite, quite an attractive store. Now, now that we're back on this building here, which is, because of the 300-foot distance and because of the existing development on the site, and it's infill development, so it's always a little bit more challenging dealing with a site like that. The other challenge is that along Collingwood, there's some smaller existing buildings that they are working with them to see if maybe the site could be expanded down to Collingwood. But right now, you know, that was a constraint on their site as well. And that would be the, the water and ice facility, the car wash, and then there's a small office building that I believe is vacated at the, at the moment. But there's a chance that perhaps the site plan could be expanded to go down to Collingwood, and then it would consume, the development could take the whole, the whole block there. But the areas of concern where they have requested some deviations from our development codes, Mayor and Council, would be on the setback on Brady Street, so mainly so they can set the building back far enough to meet their 300-foot separation. And actually, as far as the setback is concerned, in the downtown, as you know, particularly in the historic district or anywhere that's owned in DC, we actually have encouraged building setting closer to, to the roadway. So, this, this type of building orientation being closer to the street is completely compatible with, with the area. With the building being set a little bit closer to the street, they've asked for some leniency on the, on the landscaping as well, which would be corresponding to the reduced setback. There's an existing sign on the site that I mentioned that is about 14, 15 foot tall. They would choose not to utilize that sign because they would like to bring on a new sign that would have, that would look more, much more compatible with the site. And that would also carry on the brick veneer, and it would have the, the digital reading in it. So, instead of the existing sign of approximately the same height, they would like to have permission to have this particular sign on the property. And the other deviation, the landscape is, would be the walls on these, there's a screen wall around the property, particularly on your east, on your east elevation, adjacent, there is, there is a residential land use to, to the east. And so, along the parking there that would front along the east side, the code would normally require a six-foot masonry wall, and they would like to have a, a three-foot masonry wall. Now, right now, along that entire side is a, is a six-foot chain link fence, again with barbed wire in some, in some cases. The staff and the planning commission felt that the shorter wall actually was compatible because doing the longer wall really, really blocked the, blocked the site in, and we believe for security purposes and also for aesthetics that the openness is, is actually an enhancement on the property. So, the staff recommended approval of these deviations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission did approve it, but I will note that they shared Mr. Smallage's concerns about the two existing stores. So, with that, I think if you don't mind, Mayor and Council, I would like to have Circle K come up directly so I don't miscommunicate what their intentions are with those stores and tell you exactly what their plans are for Florence and particularly those two, two stores, if that would be okay.
Before you bring them up, on the map you have up there now, where is the entrance and exits to the property?
The, the main entrance?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the, the main entrance, I would point to it, but I know that wasn't show up on you. So, the ma, the main entrance, there's two driveways on, on Main Street. There currently, it's almost a continuous open driveway on, on Main Street for the old Foxworth. ADOT has thus far sent their support for the reduction of driveways and the allowance of the two, of the two driveways. And then on the, on the backstreet, I believe that's Elizabeth, correct? There is a, a, an additional driveway. So, there's two on Main Street and then one on the, on the east frontage.
On what?
On, on Elizabeth.
And Mark, another question for you. Deliveries to the store, where will they be made? In front of the store or off of Brady Street or where?
Well, Mayor and Council, they have the opportunity with this store to actually be able to come onto the property and do everything that they need to do for the function of the gas station and for the convenience store on the property within, contained within their parking area. So, they do not actually have to do any of their business on, from off the street. At their existing stores, they're a little, they're a little bit confined on those two properties. They have the opportunity for loading and unloading on this, on the property here.
And one other thing, trash, where would they be located?
Also is a trash container that's located on, on the property, and that is loaded and unloaded from inside the property.
And the last thing, fire hydrant placement, where are they, where will the fire hydrant placements be?
The Fire Department is still, would still be reviewing this, this property, but the development of the site, the existing hydrants that are on the property may, may be adequate or they may be expanded, but we, we have not fully evaluated that. If we do add hydrants, most likely they would be along one or more of the street frontages. And those would be in the, in the right of way.
And they're located in, on the property?
Mayor and Council, I don't believe that we would locate a, a public hydrant on the property. I believe that they would be located probably along one of the three frontages.
So, the probability, because I understand we're taking a look at bringing the water line from the tank down, so it'll come from south to north to it. Again, I gotta go back to what Jerry said about the parking because all he's got's on, off-street or on-street parking there, that the fire hydrants, if we go in there and we put in a fire where you can't park, that kind of messes him up also. That's the only reason I was asking those questions because I am concerned, like Jerry said, about that also.
Understood.
Is there sidewalks on the north side of the property and then on the, well, on the west, east and north sides of the property? Or will there be sidewalks outside the wall?
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Hawkins, absolutely. On all three frontages, there, there, there will be sidewalks. There are existing sidewalks along most of the frontage today, but those will be evaluated as to whether they're, they're adequate and whether they're, if they are inadequate, they will be modified to some extent. Any existing curb cuts that are no longer utilized will be, will be closed and the sidewalks will be replaced in those areas.
Okay. It looks like to me the logical place for a fire hydrant would be on Main Street between the two driveways.
Member Anderson, Mayor and Council, there are a couple of things into, into play, and, and one will be evaluating, the Fire Department looking at it specifically to identify where their, the best location is for them so that they can access, be able to access the entire site utilizing a particular hydrant. But I know that also the project that we would like to work on as far as expanding the water services to the, to the property may have an impact on that as well.
Yeah, I understand.
You said somebody from Circle K here?
Mayor and Council, absolutely. We have two representatives. I'm not sure which, which one or both, so I'll just go ahead and invite you to come up and introduce yourself and...
Don't make him mad, Bill. Big as he is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Mike Scarborough with Land Development Consultants in Phoenix. As Mark indicated at the Planning Commission meeting, one of the major issues that was raised was in regards to what will happen with the remaining stores. And as the neighbor to our north indicated, the property he shares a boundary with is a leased property. We have a few years remaining on that lease. We do have the right to sublease it. It's our intent to sublease it, but we also are aware of the difficulties to some degree of re-tenanting properties in downtown Florence. We've been made aware of that in multiple conversations with members of the community. So, the comment that was made in regards to what are they looking to get from a lease standpoint, I don't know that we're in a position to answer actual dollars, but I can tell you that we're very much aware of what the lease rate needs to be in town, and it's our intent to try to lease that property and have it leased. In regards to the property at Main and Butte, that property is also a leased property, but we have the ability and are trying to exercise the ability to pull it out from the lease state and actually have the opportunity to purchase it. The intent in doing that is twofold. One is, we understand that it's kind of Main and Main for the town, and the intent is not to have a, a store that would be sitting there unoccupied. Our ideal situation is that we would vacate the property when the new store were to be opened, if we were to be approved, and remove the tanks, remove the canopy, and also try to re-tenant it. In the same time, we're trying to acquire the property so that we own it in fee. And if we are able to do that, we've made, we've had conversations with planning that if we can't get it leased in a certain period of time, that we would be willing to go ahead and, and raise it. And, and then at least we have a vacant piece of property there versus a, a building that's still trying to be re-tenanted. We're very much aware of the situation that's taking place in the Main, Main Street corridor. We're not wanting to be anyone that's adding to that scenario for the town, but we also have been a partner in town for over 40 years. Our first store was open and built here in 1972. So, we are vested, we have a vested interest in the town. We have a food offering that we would like to expand, services we'd like to expand in that store, which is the reason we'd like to build a newer, bigger store. And unfortunately, the two opportunities we own, we have today are leased interests. We don't have the ability to, to tie the hands of the people that own them. We can only convey to you what we're willing to do and what we're, we're going to be able to try to do.
That sounds pretty good. Just remember on your leasing, it's not Scottsdale.
Yes, sir.
And the gold, the lost Dutchman gold mine isn't under your property. Because that's the majority of the problems we have here with absentee landlords in, in Florence is everybody thinks their property's worth a heck of a lot more, and it is. If you were in Scottsdale, you could get a lot more. But down here, as we try to rejuvenate Main Street and everything, and I appreciate you working towards trying to get them re-leased or whatever you have to do to do that. But I too worry about, you know, I don't want to see what's going on in the one in Coolidge, where you got boarded up windows and other, we got enough fences around here. We don't need another fence on Main Street.
Understood.
And are you going to raise that building in Coolidge or what are you going to do with that one over there? Uh-oh, we got the boss coming up now.
Sir.
Mayor and Council, my name is Suzie Peel with Circle K. The site in Coolidge is being marketed for sublease, and it's boarded up, protect the asset at this point in time, but we are marketing it and we do have some interest from some parties there. So, our intent is not to level that location as it is a lease, but we are looking for a good tenant at this point.
And this one down here on Main and Butte, you're not going to resell it to you totem?
I, I didn't hear your question.
Are you going to resell it back to you totem that you bought it from?
No.
Okay. And if I understand right, you're, you're going to have a stipulation on the property that it won't be in, to, for a business in competition with you. Is that correct?
If we have the ability to control that under a fee situation, if we own the property, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they're, they're going to remove the fuel tanks so there wouldn't be another, another competitor as such. I mean, because they're, they're removing the fuel tanks, right?
Correct. We will move the fuel tanks and the fuel canopy and all the dispensers and the piping.
Right.
Thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all of the efforts made to accommodate the closure of those buildings and the reopening of a new building. With that, however, I have a question about employees, not related to the planning issue. How many employees are currently with the two facilities, and is there any accommodation being made to place those same individuals in the new facility?
The total number of employees in the newer environment, larger store, will probably be very similar to the number of employees we have trying to operate two stores. There's, there's actually the very real likelihood that we may, you may actually see another employee more visible total than we did between the two stores just because of the size of the new facility.
Thank you. Also, I don't know, it wasn't brought up, I don't think, but there, you're going a little above and beyond working with us to keep it look, blend in with the historic Main Street. You are veneering it with the used red, red brick veneer, which will look a lot like the Brunon camp and, well, a lot of the red brick buildings in town, which I think is great because, you know, a lot of the Circle K's are just flat stucco, you know, and this is going to really enhance the neighborhood in that part of the neighborhood, along with the Happy Adobe, which has upgraded that property. I think they'll complement each other really well.
John?
Well, just one other question about the timing of opening and closing. I, I'm assuming that you're going to keep the other stores open until this one gets opened.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, yes, sir. That would be the intent.
Okay, thank you. I know some people here would really have a problem if they couldn't stop and get their drink each morning.
Yeah.
Here. I'm talking about our clerk. She knows that.
Well, and our manager does too.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. A lot of people depend on Circle K. Appreciate you being here.
Any other question?
I have one more. Kind of goes back to the fire hydrant thing. If, I understand, you know, it's, it's not a cut and dry situation on that. Is there going to be a stipulation if, if for some reason we can't get that right amount of pressure over there? Is that gonna, this would be a question for Brent, I would imagine.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hawkins, we're currently working...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hawkins, we're currently working with the applicant diligently to come up with a solution that benefits Florence, the properties along Main Street, as well as this potential economic development venture. And from a staff perspective, we're confident that working with the applicant, we're going to be able to meet the requirements of the code.
Okay.
Looking at your map again, Brent. Trying to, the wall is going to go completely around from Brady to down Elizabeth, down to Collingwood. Is that correct?
I believe Mark should be the right one to answer that question.
Mark do that?
Mayor, along Brady, essentially you have the backside of the building, which is, which is serving as a, as a de facto wall. And then where they have a three-foot screen wall, it's really to screen the parking and the headlights of the cars along, for the loading, the loading area. They have Brady and Elizabeth and then along the frontage, along Elizabeth. Along the Collingwood frontage, there actually are, coming up to the existing development that's there on the property. So, there is no wall planned on that side at this point.
On, on the Collingwood side? There's no wall there?
On the Collingwood side, the, the current plan right now shows that the car wash and the water and ice facility and the small building next to the car wash will, will continue to be there and they'll be coexisting with those along the frontage. But they are working with those property owners and, and folks that are leasing those businesses to see if potentially the site could be expanded down to Collingwood.
The Circle K site?
Yes. And if they do modify the site plan, the site plan approval by the Planning Commission was conditioned that if it is expanded to go down to Collingwood, that an amendment will be brought back to them for their review.
Thank you. Any other question?
What's the timing on this? If, if this gets approved, when will it start and when will it finish?
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Anderson, I think that the next step really in this venture is going to be dismissal of a design, of a development agreement application so that we can work out some of the details of the, of the infrastructure project that we've alluded, alluded to here. If they would like to and we feel comfortable at some point proceeding with the review of construction plans at, at risk, we can have that, we can facilitate that discussion as, as well. But I think the first thing we want to do is, much like the next item on the agenda, is start having that discussion about what's going to be in that development agreement and, and working out the details of what the water solution is going to be on the property.
Thank you.
Any others? Here are no others. Brent, do you have anything else you need input in? Okay, then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 1603-16, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a town court infill incentive plan request related to the proposed development of a new downtown Circle K convenience store and gas station to be located on Pinal County Assessor Parcel Number 202-03-0580.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second to adopt Resolution 1603-16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, discussion, approval, disapproval of directing staff to commence development negotiations with Simon CRE Beacon Five LLC and other associated parties regarding the proposed development of a medical office building at 174 West Highway 287 Florence, Arizona. Mayor and council members, as, as you just heard.
Thank you, folks.
Through the discussion that was just completed regarding the Circle K development, we, we face a similar situation regarding the development proposed by Simon CRE Beacon, which is a healthcare facility, in that we have some infrastructure limitations in terms of water line sizing and they would have some difficulty without assistance meeting the minimum fire flow requirements as required by our adopted codes in the Town of Florence, which are also the international codes. Therefore, Simon CRE Beacon Five has submitted for council's review a development agreement application based on our new development agreement standard. And we are here before council tonight as a staff asking if council will approve review of that application and our ability to begin negotiation of a development agreement. Of course, that development agreement, once negotiated, would come back to council for approval. But our new process requires council to approve of spending staff time to negotiate an agreement with the applicant.
I think it's almost a no, no-brainer. Need a motion unless someone has a question about it.
I make a motion, direct the staff to commence development negotiation with Simon CRE Beacon Five LLC and other associated parties seeking to enter into a DA with the Town of Florence in order to facilitate the proposed development of a medical office building in Florence, Arizona.
Second.
We have a motion, second, direct staff to commence development negotiation with Semcor CRE Beacon Five LLC and other associated parties. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Short reports.
Mr. Mayor, I have a number of items tonight. First, I wanted to recognize Mr. Skip Chase, who's in the audience, as well as his partner, Dennis Lechner, if you, if you guys would stand. It has come to my attention, and I think it's really neat, I would like to bring it to the council and the public's attention, that these, these gentlemen just won the most prestigious award that is provided to Taco Bell franchisees in the world. It's called the Glenn Bell Award. In case you didn't know, Glenn Bell is the gentleman who started Taco Bell in, in nineteen sixty-four. It's the largest award that's provided by Taco Bell Corporation. And they look at a number of things, including how well you maintain your assets, the type of assets that are provided and built, in terms of the amenities. And how neat is it that our franchisee in Florence is the winner of the most prestigious award provided by Taco Bell Corporation? I wanted to make sure that they were recognized.
They sure ought to be. Congratulations.
Next item I have is to let everybody know of the wonderful things happening in the next few weeks at the Florence Library. The National Novel Writing Month is this month and every Monday evening in November, they have various events that are going to be sponsored by the library relating to National Novel Writing Month. So, please see Rose. Five thirty to seven thirty, I want to say, is, is the times when those are offered. Second, kids voting tomorrow, last day. Good advertisement for everybody else to vote too, but kids voting tomorrow at the library. I know that they're also voting at the school tomorrow, all the schools. So, should be, should be a lot of fun. Technology program, eBooks and e-readers is being provided Thursday, November tenth at 2:00 PM. Adult coloring night, which I just found out from my favorite show, Sixty Minutes, is, is a really big thing now in the United States, will be held November tenth from five to eight. We will continue to have early release programs for the kids on early release days. The next one scheduled for November sixteenth. Coffee Club, the first Coffee Club, will be offered November seventeenth at 10:00 AM. And I believe your keynote speaker that day is me. So, I think you're advertising it as meet the town manager. So, we'll look forward, if folks want to come out, to Coffee Club, 10:00 AM on the seventeenth. Open Mic Night will be held Friday, November eighteenth from six to eight PM. Star Trek and Beyond at the library will be held Saturday, November nineteenth at 1:00 PM. I held, I, I went to the Star Wars version of that a few months ago and, and with the kids and it was a great event. And then there's going to be a Thanksgiving break program provided by the library, Wednesday, November twenty-third, all day. So, those are the things upcoming at the library. Next announcement, we just found out that Ally that works for us in our Parks and Recreation Department has been elected to the southern region, to be the southern region rep for the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association and will be serving a two-year term on that board. So, I'm told that that is a very desirable thing. And that, when was the last time we had somebody on that board? Never? And I, I next want to read into the record a note that I received. It says, "To the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center, this is in memory to my parents, Robert and Evelyn Burns. Thank you for always being so helpful and thoughtful to my parents. They always express their great love and appreciation for Laura, Tanya and Rhoda. You and the center brought great joy to my parents. Thank you." And we received a check for a thousand dollars in donation in, in memory to parents. And lastly, I wanted to give the fire chief an opportunity to, to say a few words about our participation in the Arizona Run for the Fallen. I sent information to the council with respect to that, but I know that Dave wanted to recognize some folks on TV tonight, so have at it.
Thank you. Mayor Anken, members of the council, four years ago, the, the event was started with the idea of creating a corridor that recognized fallen service members through, that died, that came from Arizona. It starts down in Tucson. It comes up through Florence and it goes, it ends up at the state capitol. This event happened a couple of weeks ago and the idea is that there's all the different, armed forces are represented. There's a runner that carries a flag for each and then family members of fallen service members meet these people at each mile marker so that they can acknowledge the sacrifice and they hand them an American flag and read information about the, the fallen service member. It's a very powerful event. Again, it's, we were providing medical coverage for this event by ourselves, but the police departments, all the law enforcement, every agency switch off. Well, last year, we did the same thing. All the fires, I contacted all the other fire departments in, in that corridor and now we all switch off too, just like law enforcement does. Going into next year, they're going to add fallen first responders, police and fire into this event, starting with the nineteen firefighters from Prescott that lost their lives a few years ago. So, I just, Florence is a very integral part in helping get this up and running and it's, it's very meaningful to the families and I was looking forward to expanding it going forward. I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Dave, I want to expand off of that with you. I was at the dinner that night at the Legion for them when they hit, coming to town. And there is nothing that'll tear your heart up to sit there and, and hear some mom and dad talk about their son or daughter that has lost their life and served our country. It was a, it was a real gets-you kind of moment to, to meet these people and to see how they're reacting to life afterwards. And the organization that ran, all of the runners were veterans of one form or another, I believe. And they got a little bit later start out of here than they anticipated, but it's, it's a great deal and you guys being associated with it makes me feel good.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that if they had someone not show up this year, called out sick or something, and one of our members, Chris Reagan, was able to step in and fill in for him during that. So, we had, we have some pictures of him carrying the flags.
Great. You done? Okay. Departments, anybody have any question, any department heads that are here tonight?
I'm okay.
Okay. Second call to the public. Anybody else in the public have anything you want to talk about? CNN Movement, our close call to the public, call to the council, John?
Would like to thank the police department again for the tipicop event that went on this last Friday. It was quite successful, as I understand. How much money did you say they raised? So, that was for the Special Olympics, correct? Thanks again.
Becky?
Oh, I would just like to thank the HDEC Committee for inviting me to go to Flagstaff. It was really a great day. I loved spending time with the town staff, Gilbert and Will, getting to know especially Will a little bit better. Of course, reminiscing with Gilbert, but also with the members of the HDEC Committee and of Planning and Zoning Committee. We had a great day. I got to know these people a lot better on a personal level and really had an enjoyable day, plus loving to see the award given to the Town of Florence. The second item I have is I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Department, Brian, for the inviting the Santa Cruz Club down to do the presentation at Padilla Park for the mariachis. It was just wonderful. Those high school kids just really played their heart out and they were actually very good. But sometime in the future, I would like to see a festival with adult mariachis coming into the area at a, at a time where we can get the communities together to participate in a real nice event and also bluegrass. I've mentioned it several times before. I know they're costly organizations to bring down, but they make so much of a difference to the kind of programs that you give. But that Santa Cruz was just so enjoyable and actually there were a lot of folks that turned out for that and it was at between eleven and two in the afternoon. Great. So, thank you so much.
It was a little bit warm, too. Bill?
Well, I'd like to point out the, the great response, the quick response and professionalism when there was the two power lines or power poles got pulled down behind the American Legion. Fire, police and Public Works were on the scene within minutes, I mean, and had it under control and did a really great job. And then also, I'd like to thank staff on where we're at on the Main Street improvements. I've been getting a lot of compliments from citizens that are really happy now that they've seen those. I think there's two big lights left up, but, but it really has cleaned up the, the view on Main Street when you're coming down it. And it's actually a little brighter at night with those new lights. If anybody's been out at night down Main Street and noticed. Anyway, that's, thank you, staff.
Karen?
I just want to say how impressed I am with all of the various programs that are held within our town. Hearing about what's going on at the library, what Parks and Recreation is doing, fire, police and all of the other staff departments that are so active. And I just want to keep encouraging more and more people to turn out for those from all of our communities, north, south and, and west. So, thanks to all of you for the hard work that you're putting in.
Mary?
I actually don't have anything tonight.
Karen?
Not to ditto anything that was already previously said, but to add to it, we recently had the Pony Express come to town hall to deliver and stamp some mail that residents brought forward. Ally did a great job of communicating with the K-8 schools and getting some letters from the students as well. I look forward to expanding upon that program in the future. It was a great event. And also tomorrow is Election Day, so hopefully everybody comes out in the community and then for once and for all, we can take down the signs that are all up and down the highways and we can move forward.
Last thing, Brian. Halloween was a trick and a treat. It was neat. The last count I saw was twelve hundred and fifty-four people come through the gate. What was, do you know what the final total was?
Mayor, I think it was maybe twenty, twenty-five more than that, but we were close to thirteen hundred total.
The, I, I had two people come up to me after the parade. They drove downtown, or one person, excuse me. He drove downtown. He lives on Phoenix Street. He'd been at his house from, since five o'clock in the afternoon until eight o'clock and not one trick-or-treater had come by. o'clock in the afternoon until eight o'clock, and not one trick-or-treater had come by. So, he came down here and was giving candy away to any kid that had come along, he had all this candy, and he couldn't eat it, so he was giving candy away. The, we did have a lot of trick-or-treaters out in the Anthem area, I know that for a fact. We did have some here in town, too, but the party that you put on down there is doing great, and it just seems like it gets a little bigger. I was noticing the parking lot, you know, we have it much bigger, we're going to have to build another parking lot. But the, and to all the people that donated to the trunk-or-treat for the elementary, the K through eight, we really appreciate that, too. Some people forgot about it, I'm not going to mention any names, two of them are sitting here, but the, it was a great deal, and I think it's kept our crime, I didn't hear too many bad things that happened over Halloween, and that is always a good thing. And as Tara said, the election's tomorrow, no matter if you vote for her or me, whatever you do is go out and vote. It's the most important right that you have, and you need to exercise it each and every time. So, with that, we need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second, we have a motion to second to, to what? Go into executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into executive session, we will come back into, to close the meeting.